Good evening and thank you. If you'll please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us this evening. Before we begin, I'd like to make an announcement. We have received the resignation of Dr. John Stich as superintendent. And we will be asking for a motion to add this to the consent agenda. However, I just wanted to say that John provided us with a statement about his decision. His statement is, "I recently met with the board chair and vice chair to discuss stepping down from my position as superintendent. I have appreciated my time at Evergreen and with the recent passage of both levies wish Evergreen the best and look forward to its future growth. I ask that you will respect my privacy and understand my desire to not discuss the reasons for my personal decision." We want to thank John for his contributions while in the district and we wish him well in all of his future endeavors. So, at this time, we'll entertain a motion to add an item to the superintendent consent agenda, which is Dr. Stich's resignation with agreement.
I move that we insert Dr. Stich's resignation agreement into item four of the superintendent consent agenda and amend the consent agenda accordingly.
Okay, it's been moved? Okay, so moved in second. All in favor of adding that to the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. All right, so then we will adopt the agenda as amended. If we can get a motion for that.
I move for adoption of tonight's agenda.
Second, as amended.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Great. All right, next is our board consent agenda.
I move that we adopt the board consent agenda as presented.
Second. Moved in second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, and then next on the list is the superintendent consent agenda.
We'll move that we adopt the superintendent's consent agenda as amended previously.
Great, thank you. Second? It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, next on our list, matters reserved for board action, which is an appointment of director for District Area Number Four. As you all know, Todd Uzorria resigned his position in last meeting, was officially his last meeting, which was on February 12th. So, the board conducted a search over the last couple of months where we gathered, sent out information. We gathered resumes. We selected people to interview. We had those interviews last Tuesday evening. And tonight, we vote for the person that we will appoint to the position.
We had excellent candidates. We had really good selection to choose from and the interviews were interesting and so we feel good about who we had to choose from. So, that was great.
Any comments, Rob?
You're here. I really enjoy talking to such strong candidates and I'm very happy that Todd's district has such a deep bench of candidates who, not only in my opinion qualified, but are also really interested in the welfare of kids. It's nice to know that so many people are out there.
I agree. It's always fun to get different perspectives of the people that live in the district and we have a group that brought a lot of different skillsets and talents. And so, I don't know. Is everybody like, are we ready to vote? Or did we want more discussion?
I would just like to say to all of the candidates that did apply for the position, thank you. It takes a lot. This is a big commitment. And to see how many people actually wanted to serve as school board directors was very inspiring and it's not your last chance. The elections are all coming up. So, again, thank you guys. Unfortunately, we can't when we pick one. We'd love to have a much bigger board. Many hands makes a light duty. But again, thank you guys for taking the time, filling out the application, coming in and sitting down and interviewing with us and answering all of our tough questions. We really appreciate it.
All right. Well, with that, I guess we will all cast our votes. Then we will pass them down to Mr. Mike Merlino, who will then read off our votes.
That's right.
Oh, yeah?
Oh, you have mine.
We're having a little technical difficulties here.
There's yours.
Here's mine.
And here's yours.
There we go. Got it. Technical, I had both sets, apparently.
Can I read the?
Okay, so the director's name and the person that we voted.
First vote is from Board Member Rob Perkins. He voted for Rachel Rogers. Board Member Victoria Bradford voted for Rachel Rogers. Board Member Julie Bookenager voted for Rachel Rogers and Board Member Jenny Gronwall voted for Rachel Rogers, so.
Yes, she wasn't.
It's like Rachel Rogers.
Guess it's Rachel Rogers.
Yes.
Yes. Congratulations.
So, that's, we've had other things on our minds lately, so that was interesting. So, we'll be getting together with Rachel. And congratulations. And we'll be getting together with you soon.
Yes, March 12th. For everybody in the audience that would like to know, March 12th is the day that Rachel will be sworn in to her position with the school board.
She'll join us up here.
Yes.
Okay, congratulations. Excited to have you with us. You bring a lot of skills that will be good for this board and we're really excited about what you bring. It'll be, it'll be good.
Thank you, I'm excited to start.
Welcome.
All right. Next on our agenda is focus on student results. We have Results R4, which is our citizenship monitoring report. And I believe that Matt Handelman is going to come up and take us through that. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, President Bookenager and the rest of the board. As you know, about a month ago, we talked about R4 results in citizenship at the board workshop a couple of weeks ago. At the board meeting, we had first reading where I sort of went through line by line with you all about all of the different data that we collected and presented to you. Since then, we've had no comments from the public or from staff. So, I'm here just to recommend to you that you approve the monitoring report as well as the interpretation and compliance report, with the exceptions as noted.
Thank you. All right, so at this time, we will call for audience questions or comments pertaining to the citizenship monitoring report. All right, seeing none, I will call for a motion. I move that the board accept the superintendent, or excuse me, that was on our newspaper. I move that the board accept the monitoring report for R4. Citizenship is presented for second reading as reasonable progress with noted exceptions.
Second.
All right, so moved in second and we'll open it up for the board to ask questions.
I don't have any questions. I just, again, want to mention that, you know, citizenship is something that is even more important in this day and age and it's also one of the hardest things to monitor and find evidence for. And it's something that we want to see woven throughout the system and it's not just kind of an isolated thing that you can teach. It's something we have to live. And so, I appreciate the work of your work, Matt, and Cabinet and our staff to find ways of showing this work. And so, I know it'll be a challenging area, but I think it's a worthy thing for us to be talking about and modeling for our kids and so, thanks.
I just wanted to comment about the content of the report a little bit. This is one of the results policies that takes a little thinking about in order to get some reliable data around. And when I ran across an article about the correlation of students who participate in CTSL's career and technical service organizations like DECA and FFA and there are 10 others, and showed Cabinet and staff this piece of research that I'd found with a very short search. They jumped on it and included data from the participation rates for these vocational and technical clubs, STEM clubs essentially these days, for inclusion in the report. And I think that actually enhanced the confidence that we could have in the data. And appreciate, it felt like instant action to me. Thank you for that.
I think the only thing I'd like to mention is that as we continue to look at our results monitoring reports, that some, that, you know, as a board, I think it's important for us to kind of take a look at and figure out, you know, what data, since it's kind of our first year and our first go around with the information, like what, you know, what is really necessary? What can we still back on? What are we missing? And just kind of really take another look, another review of all of them as we kind of look at this one and as we look at the rest of them to make sure that we're not, you know, duplicating maybe efforts in some of the areas or getting information and really making sure that it's what we need. Anything to add, Mike?
I do not have anything to add, no.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. All right, so we will now take a vote to approve the interpretation of R4 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, great. The board's results policy, R4 citizenship monitoring report, reasonable interpretation has been approved. All right, next is our superintendent update and so we will turn it over to Mike Merlino.
Yes. I haven't had a lot of time to plan for the update, but I guess the first thing I would say is that the last meeting, I think it was February 12th, it was actually the night of the election. Huge success that we passed both of those levies. We got both the enrichment levy and the technology levy. Very important for us as we move forward. Definitely want to say thank you to the ECS for the work that they did, particularly Toby Lucic and Tanisha Harris, I think is the leaders of that organization. So, very important. As it kind of moves into the second thing I would like to mention, which is the kind of the budget process. And there's been kind of conversation over the last few months about what you've heard not just, you've heard around the state basically, is that many districts are facing shortfalls. Evergreen faces a shortfall as well. And we're kind of looking, there's been a lot of work that's been done kind of behind the scenes, but I think that what we're looking at is trying to kind of set a, have a reset at this point in time and kind of look at the process from involvement. You know, this has always been a collaborative district. We've always had a lot of community involvement. I've been, I've been here for almost 19 years and it's always been kind of a real important thing for the school district is the community's involvement, staff involvement. And I know even before that, it has been. So, what we're kind of looking in this reset is kind of look at the work that we've done already in the budget process and kind of coming up with some ideas, reaching back out. We've already, we kind of hit the ground running yesterday with a series of meetings with principals and cabinet. We will continue to do that. After the meeting at the workshop, we'll have a little further conversation about kind of the ideas around the process in how we get more community involvement in the process as we look at priorities and we look at potential issues as we build the budget. It's, if my budget, I've got a budget report, I've got a superintendent, so I'm going to hold off on some of this stuff to go back to the budget report. But I would just, the biggest thing is that we're moving forward. We're resetting and we're really interested in a transparent process and we'll continue to talk about that.
Great, thank you. All right, next is our good news report. For that, we're going to call up the Executive Director of Communications, Gels Fuller.
Good evening. The first item on the good news report, I know you've probably seen the story from our video services group as well as an article in The Columbian about Heritage High School students and their communication with the original Freedom Riders. An English teacher, Steve Mastert, asked his students to create some projects based on the idea of turning plants. So, two of his students, Antoinette Gaye and Michaela Acevedo, were inspired by the Freedom Riders story. It's a book as well as a movie from 2007, it's titled Hillary's Flame. So, their interest eventually led to communications with some of the original Freedom Riders and led to a video conference call between students at Heritage and Carlos Bargan, I believe, is how he pronounces it, who's a member of that original class of Freedom Riders. So, for over an hour and a half, the students and Carlos exchanged thoughts, inspiration, and he encouraged them to finish their education, emphasize finding themselves and just continue on in their pursuit of their dreams. Very, very inspiring presentation. And so, if you haven't seen that video, I encourage you to go back. It was a great project. The two students did a great job of organizing it as well as inspiring their fellow students to take part in it. And one of the reasons, if you get a chance to go look at the video, one of the young men did feel really comfortable writing or speaking, but he sang a song for Carlos. And that video has gotten an amazing number of views throughout the United States. So, a great project for us. It is that time when our extracurricular teams and activities are competing here at the district level and we're really pleased to report that the Heritage High School DECA team did well enough in the regional competition that they have a huge group heading to state. And then Union High School and Mountain View's feature business leaders at the LA group also have almost over 100 students that are continuing on to the state competition. So, we'll be watching and we'll be reporting back on those groups. Heritage High School, again, had another great activity. To celebrate Black History Month, they invited a panel and had a civic forum with a number of community influencers and entrepreneurs. The auditorium was packed and the students were really engaged in listening to eight honored guests tell their stories, answer questions and show support for students, but especially the students of color at Heritage High School. Cascade Middle School Orchestra, if you go up there, admire their bows. They have seven new carbon fiber bows that were donated by Kennedy Violins in concert with the Northwest Quartet Festive. They matched the funds and apparently seven bows, these carbon steel bows, cost about $2,700. So, that was a great donation and will enhance that music program. Pacific Middle School students collected supplies and made 63 care bags for the homeless. This was a service project as part of their character dare for Character Strong curriculum. The theme for January was selflessness and so they also created inspiring and encouraging note cards that were inserted into the bags as well. And then on staff news, Adam Aguilera has been appointed by Governor Inslee to serve on the Professional Educator Standards Board. Natalie Haskell, a kindergarten teacher at Harmony Elementary, has been nominated for the 2018-19 National Life Changers of the Year Award, which recognizes and rewards Kite Poe, school district employees across the United States. And then Lita Myers, our longtime athletic director at Heritage High School, has been inducted into the Lower Columbia College Hall of Fame. And that's a little glimpse of the good news for this month.
Thank you, Gil. Questions? Questions? Mayor Superintendent Merlino has.
I was just curious if you missed any of the reports overall.
I'll catch ya.
I know, it's just not as much fun now that you're not coming up from the back.
I can still go up, I can still go stand up there.
But usually it was on a day after, yeah.
I'll have to change my approach.
All right, so next is the budget update and so we will turn this back over to Mike Merlino, who is our interim superintendent.
So, yes, there, every month we bring forward some kind of performance indicators to the board on the budget and you've got that document, there's a couple documents. The first is that, and as we say almost every, I say every month, enrollment generally has a lot, a lot to say with how things go. Our enrollment actually is tracking right about where we thought it would in the current year. Across the district, I think we're within about 30 of what we had estimated out of the 24,000 or so students that we have, which is great. The, you can see the numbers above and then that also ties back in and the students drive the staffing and then ultimately try to manage the staffing to make sure that we are within what has been allocated. We've done that as well so that on the staffing side, we're within approximately three FTE of what was allocated out of the buildings. And that's pretty typical, that we're pretty close on that. I think that's attributed to the principals and the HR staff and just kind of the forecasting. Special ed, you can also see at the bottom of the report right about at what we had budgeted. The second document kind of gives an actual estimate of where we think we're going to end the year. In typical years, it's really been a situation where if you track with your performance indicators, for the most part, it's going to mean that it's a pretty good year. The budget issues that districts face, and Evergreen faces as well, and we'll talk more about those when we get to some of the community forums, have kind of changed the indicators and that the indicators aren't really enough to just say, well, if we track with those, we're in a good position. A number of things have occurred over the last year or two relative to the McCleary decision, our enrollment changes, that have kind of changed that model a bit. So, when you look at the next document, what I've done and what I do most every month is kind of look at our revenues and expenditures and come up with an estimate where I think we're going to end the year. So, when I had prepared this document, you can see that at that time, I was figuring that our $24 million-ish fund balance at the beginning of the year would end up around $20.5 million at the end of the year on the trajectory that we were when I prepared this. But I guess the thing I would say is like every day, something changes and some days you have good news and some days you have not so good news. One thing that was really positive that we learned yesterday, we've worked really hard with the state to try to help our district become fully funded in the transportation program. It's a, it's a program that's really well thought of around the state. We transport more students than most districts and maybe any district in the state, even though we're not the largest school district in the state. But the formula that the state had created, we were underfunded by $3 to $4 million. Well, we did quite a bit of work with OSPI and with the legislature to try to recognize some of the new salary dollars that have come in, make sure that they were outpaid through the formula. We've also had a lot of work done with our staff in special services and transportation. The formula looks at locations throughout the district. So, we've done quite a bit of work with, with that, adding locations. And we learned Monday that we're basically going to be fully funded in the transportation program, which is really significant and really helps us as we move forward. I think one of the other things that I would mention that occurred yesterday, we did in, I talked earlier about the fact that we kind of hit the ground running. I think this is maybe 18 hours in this theoretical chair. But we had meetings with staff where we basically at this point kind of have tried to institute a spending freeze. And what that means is kind of the, we have billing budgets that have the ability to spend the money that they have, but we have program, kind of district level programs that we felt we would kind of slow down for the rest of this year to try to help that number that we are estimating, the $20.5 million, try to get that number up to a higher figure, which could potentially also help us as we look at the budget reductions that we will start bringing forward here in the next few weeks. So, I feel like the meetings that we had yesterday were really positive meetings. I felt like the principals were, I mean, they were great. I mean, they, they were real open. I thought it was great. The involvement that we had from both Julie and Victoria at that was really well received. So, I kind of feel like we're kind of changing the path and on a collaborative path to getting us where we need to be in a quick timeframe that allows the appropriate involvement from the community and from the staff. So, budget-wise, I feel better today than I did maybe a month or so ago in terms of the trajectory. And we will, every day, work very hard to make sure that we have done our due diligence and have good plans that value the good things that we have in the school district, puts students first and reflects the values of the community and the board. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I know that we're going to talk more in-depth at workshop a little bit about some of the process that.
I have a feeling for the next month to two or three months, we'll talk a lot about the budget.
It'll be a lot of process.
There'll be a lot of process and a lot of conversations and people will have a lot of opportunity to talk. And I was told in one of the meetings yesterday that I talked for 22 consecutive minutes on a listening tour. So, I realize that when you're listening, maybe you reduce that from 22 down maybe 19, is there about? So, I will do my best.
Yeah, and we're getting, and we have the meeting scheduled.
Yeah, the, the public meetings. Yeah, and you want to, you want to talk about the dates that we're looking at?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we are looking at having public forums on March 14th at Heritage High School, on March 18th at Evergreen High School, on March 21st at Union High School and on March 28th at Mountain View High School. And at the time of those meetings, we'll be from 6:00 to 7:00. And it'll be kind of a short presentation kind of outlining the why of why are, why is Evergreen facing the situation we're facing? My sense would be there'll be a lot of similar things with an Evergreen spin on it, on a spin on it. And then we'll break out into groups and have individuals have opportunities to meet at various stations. And it's not a station to station thing, but just a spot where we'll have facilitators and try to help with answering questions and really looking at, you know, when we think about a budget reduction list, which is awful to have to create for everyone, it's kind of about priorities. Because as I say, things change every day. And so, at this point in time, when we have those meetings, the legislature won't have concluded their session. We believe that they'll be done on April 28th if they don't go into some sort of special session, which they've done a lot lately. But I do think they kind of want to get done, April 28th. So, this, these meetings will be gathering more information so that as the board actually deliberates on the budget, our budget actually doesn't have to be approved until the end of August, but it gives us a lot of time then to actually build the budget and react to the information and the advice that's been given to us from the staff and from the community as we build the budget. And. And there are a lot of things still that, that will affect that bottom-line number when we get to it, and when we talk about it at those meetings, we'll say, this is kind of the number we're thinking we need to get to. These are the things that are still kind of variables at this point. Help us prioritize if things go better for us from the legislature, which doesn't always seem to happen, but it might.
We can always hope.
We can always hope, you know, we always hope. I agree.
Especially for special ed.
Yeah, I think one of the main areas that the district is pushing for is personal relief within the special ed formula. I do believe that the legislature wants to do that. It's just a question of how much, right?
How much and the timing.
Right.
Every school district that I interact with in connection with my role at this state WASTA level, everybody's facing special education shortfalls. It's all 295 of us, districts go.
Right.
All right, any other questions about budget update?
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, we will go ahead and move on to board comments. These are comments by the school board. Do we have anything? The only thing I was really going to, and it was just kind of to touch on what Mike just said about the budget process and the, the dates that we've selected for our, kind of our listening tour for the community, is that board members will be present there because it's really important for us to hear from the people that are in the schools, the, the people that live within the community, because we want to know what's important to everyone as we're making these final decisions, and some, some tough decisions probably down the pipeline, and we want to get people's input that's really important to us. So, you will be seeing us at these different community forums. Not for a lot of input, just to listen.
And I've been advised that 20 minutes, two minutes is too long.
All right, so, next then is future agenda items. Anything we want to add to our list for future school board meetings or discussions?
It's pretty well made.
Plenty on our plate right now.
Okay, then at this time, we will go into a recess where we will sign documents. We will reconvene for a board workshop where we will do budget development. We'll have a board meeting debrief, we'll do legislative updates, and then we will get a superintendent's update. Then the board will meet in executive session for review of the performance of the public employee. Thank you.